Okay, and so with respect to the people that that are on for 10 o'clock. And it's important that we start. My name is Bill Villanova, and this is the Region Six meeting. Our focus would have been to hold these regional meetings throughout the state and ensure that ensure that we met with each region and with our colleagues to discuss these important topics. But the pandemic has derailed a lot of our initiatives. One of them are these regional meetings. So we were able to create the environment here virtually so we can speak with you and gain some much-needed feedback. Pandemic has put us in a very unique situation, but we're very thankful that we have our Executive Director, Mike Lanotti, and his professional team that has done a spectacular job this year ensuring that all lines of communication are open with the Governor's Office and ensuring that our needs are met and that he's there advocating for us. So, Michael, thank you on behalf of our Executive Board and the membership. I'm going to turn the microphone over to Mike, and he will outline our virtual town hall today. Michael?
Thanks, Bill. Thank you very much for those kind words. Thank you for those who are able to join us this morning. Please know that we are continuing to monitor the COVID situation. If you've read the news the last couple of days, you've seen that there are increases in the number of confirmed cases in the state again, especially in some of our neighboring states. So we are in constant communication with the key people and players that we have been throughout. And just while we have a couple of you guys on the line to let you know, we will be hosting a webinar on November 5th to do an update on COVID as we head into the fall and the winter months. So we'll make sure to get notices out. But if you want to save the date, November 5th is going to be the next time that we have a webinar on COVID. So just a couple of housekeeping items. We don't have a super large group, and most folks I can see have their microphones on mute. So when you want to speak, you can come off of mute. You can stay on with volume. Just try to avoid the background noise if there's any. We are recording all of these town hall meetings. We started on Region One last week, and we'll be concluding tomorrow with Region Nine. So we will have the ability to post all of these on the website. So any of your colleagues from your region who were unable to join us this morning, will have the opportunity to go back and listen to any of the conversation and comments. You will also have the ability to go and see what other comments and questions were asked in other regions. So we will be putting that out there as well. Also, we have scheduled for an hour, but we have no time constraints. So we can go for as long or as short as the conversation takes us. So that's just a couple of the housekeeping things. I am now going to spend a few minutes providing an overview of the two issues that we want to talk to you about today. So I'm going to share my screen and show you a PowerPoint. So just bear with me for one second. All right. So before I begin, I just want to take a moment to thank our sponsors with their support. They are graciously helping us to underwrite our town halls today. So just want to do a quick shout out to them and thank them for that. So what I'm going to do is spend about 15 minutes just outlining what we've done thus far on the two topics we want to talk to you about today. And as a reminder, those two topics are paraprofessionals and alcohol in the funeral home. I will provide a brief overview, and we will have the majority of our time spent for questions, comments, and feedback. Just as a side note, as we get to the comment portion or discussion portion, again, you can just unmute your microphone and provide comments. You can raise your hand, and I can recognize you. And there's also a chat feature. So you're also able to type in any questions or feedback you'd like, and then I can relay that to the crowd, the group that's assembled on the Zoom call. The goal of this town hall and all the town halls is to obtain member feedback on these two issues. As I mentioned earlier, every region is having its own town hall. The process will be that we will collect the feedback from everybody, and then we will consolidate all of those remarks, present those to the Association Board for their December meeting so that they can review and further discuss the members' first round of feedback. It's very important for everyone to note that we have no desired outcome, defined next steps or plans with regard to either issue. Again, this is a first step in obtaining member feedback on them. We have taken no official position on either of the issues to be discussed, and neither has there been any legislation drafted or researched. That's important because both of these issues would require legislative action and a change in law to do anything differently. So what I'd like to do is just walk through kind of the chronology, if you will, of how we got to where we are today. We started back in 2015 with our Funeral Service Education Task Force. The goal of that task force was to strengthen and elevate funeral service now and for the future. I think it's important to note that while the issue of paraprofessionals was not necessarily on the radar or talked about by this task force in 2015, it is part of that larger or bigger picture on funeral industry workforce that was on the radar and part of the conversation and an area of focus for the task force when they did their work from 15 to 17. So again, just want to show you the full picture. So the area of focus for that task force was in the areas of residency, the education and curriculum at the mortuary science colleges, continuing education and master certification. At the end of their work, their recommendations, you can see them here. In the area of residency, they suggested adding a discernment period and increased accountability and structure around residency. As a side note, we are now just now at the point where we have drafted legislation on residency to go ahead and try to improve that process. So we are poised to introduce that when we want to into the state legislature to take those next steps. With regard to education and curriculum, they had proposed a new curriculum for the mortuary science programs. And in the last areas of continuing education and master certification, they were recommending new mandatory credentialing programs and higher-quality CE program review and approval. So their work, as I said, went from 2015 to 17, and then the keys were turned over to the Funeral Service 2020 Task Force, which was formed by the Association President at the time. They worked for a year, and their goal, as you can see there, was to explore and implement new programs to ensure a bright future for funeral service in New York State. They really did, in a lot of ways, expanded on the work of the task force or continued it, and in some places extended it even further. So and I say that because you can see there, there are areas of focus included residency and professional development, which were areas that the Education Task Force looked at as well. So that's that extension or continuation. They obviously also focused on some other areas. You can see there recruitment, mentors, and paraprofessionals. So in a way, the 2020 Task Force took more of a holistic approach to the issues around the workforce. And that's kind of, that is depicted in that circle graph you can see, where they took a look at the quality and quantity of the funeral service workforce, starting really with what we called pre-students, which were high school students who might have an interest in attending mortuary science college and becoming a funeral director and putting some tools in place around that, and then working all the way through to the point where you have funeral directors, licensed funeral directors who are now in the group of retirees. So they worked on all of those different components as it relates to these areas of focus. And then in June of 2019, they presented recommendations to the Association Board. Their recommendations really were to utilize a combination of work groups, task forces, and our bridge commission to address each of the different focus areas. And with regard to the paraprofessionals, their recommendation was to create a task force that would continue the current task force's work in this area. The Board of Directors decided prior to creating any new work groups or task forces that they would get more member input first. The original plan, as Bill was alluding to at the introduction, was to gather that input during the 2020 regional meetings. However, as we all know, COVID disrupted that plan and caused us to cancel those regional meetings, which are now replaced by these town halls. So looking at the recommendation for paraprofessionals and getting to the point where they made that recommendation, it's also important to note that getting to that point, the Task Force, the 2020 Task Force, had divided itself up into actual work groups, and they took a deeper dive into each of those focus areas. With regard to the topic of paraprofessionals, that was done through a specific exercise, which I want to walk you through this morning. What we wound up doing was presenting them with what we call the assumption scenario and ask them to answer a question for us through that. So the assumption scenario was based on a hypothetical, which really asked this group to assume that the State Association had received notice from the Department of Health that due to extremely low numbers of licensed funeral directors, that the department declared it a public health issue. So then the DOH is further looking to propose a new license or certification be developed to address the workforce need due to the lack of funeral directors and a determination that addressing the issue through additional newly licensed funeral directors was not feasible at that point. So the specific question for that group was, how would the ideal job description and responsibilities look like? What would that be? So the first part in answering that question for that group was to kind of look through the why and the what. So said another way, basically, based on the assumption scenario, why is there a lack of funeral directors? And what needs to be accounted for when creating these new positions? So the group's answer is what you can see there, it's that list. So what they said is, as we look to create a new position, the needs that we need to address and the things we need to look at to create that ideal job description are the following. To spark a career interest in funeral service, ensure we create a pool of qualified funeral workers, protect families by ensuring that everybody is a vetted and certified professional, to counteract the shortage of in the licensed programs, that being the second part of the scenario, that they couldn't address the issue through newly licensed funeral directors, to better serve families' needs in general, to also respond to the idea that funerals are now being, are more involved and requiring more event planning and similar services, to provide an option for smaller funeral homes who might, due to cost, being a cost prohibitive, not be able to hire a new licensed funeral director, to relieve some front and back office in-house, back of the house operations for the owners and managers, to supplement the availability of funeral service professionals, enhance the role of a licensed funeral director, and prevent burnout. That's more that work-life balance issue. So those were the areas that they wanted to address through any newly created positions. So once they had answered the question of the why and the what, the next question was how. So how are we going to address this? Or said another way, what new position should we consider? So this group then explored the possibility of two positions, which they dubbed the Certified Funeral Assistant and the Certified Funeral Arranger. The key word on this slide to keep focused on is the word explored. Again, as I mentioned earlier, I just want to reiterate the fact that the task force recommendation was not to form or create any new specific positions. It was simply to create a new task force to continue their work. However, this group did put a year's worth of time, thought, and discussion towards these positions to provide a framework. So I want to share that with you to help further our discussion and provide a reference for your feedback. So I would like to now just walk through the two positions. I'll go through their duties and some of the education and training requirements. So we'll start with the funeral assistant. This position was intended to be similar to the other paraprofessional positions in other fields. So you can see there, it's like the dental hygienist for a dentist, the paralegal for lawyer. I was also told it's very similar to the way that the nursing profession is now constructed. I know there's been a shortage of nurses for many years, and I believe they addressed it through some of this. So that was the intention behind that position. So here's some of the things that they would have to do and they couldn't do. So they would have to work under the direct supervision of a licensed funeral director. They would only be allowed to be employed by one funeral home at a time. As far as duties, they could sign out and transfer the deceased from the place of death and assist the funeral director with preparation, dressing, and casketing. However, they would not be allowed to transport the decedent to the place of final disposition over the concerns you can see there. They would not be allowed to direct or supervise services, sign or amend death certificates, embalm, or conduct arrangements, the arrangements pieces being handled by the certified arranger position. So again, this was the pro forma or framework proposed and on the duties that this position would be entitled to undertake. With regard to education and training, an eight-to-12-hour pre-certification training program would be required, followed by successfully passing a state-recognized exam. The certification would be issued by the state of New York, just like you. They'd have to recertify every two years. Suggestion of four credit hours per biennium that would include OSHA and ethics as two required subject matters. Switching over to the arranger position, similar to the assistant, you would work under the direct supervision of a licensed funeral director, only be employed by one funeral home at a time. This position, the person would be entitled to make arrangements, collect vital information, coordinate and schedule final disposition, arrange for the care preparation and transportation of the deceased, discuss and sell merchandise and services. However, they would not be allowed to sign contracts, sign or amend death certificates, or embalm. Those functions would remain solely with the licensed funeral director. With regard to the training requirements, 20-hour pre-certification training program, including 25 hand-on arrangements and an overview of the abomming process, also passing that exam and certification by the state, also recertification with every two years. Terms of number of credits, that was still to be determined, as well as the specific subject matters that has to be covered, except for the fact that there was a recommendation that ethics would have to be required. Again, this is the framework that was developed by that work group as a starting point for further discussion. So then, as they got closer to making their recommendation to the board in June of last year, they asked for one additional data point, which was an initial round of member feedback. So in May of 2019, the State Association conducted a member survey that I want to share the data, the data results with you now. This was shared back in 2019, but it has been about a year. So we thought it'd be important, based on what the conversation is that we're having with you, to kind of walk through those again. So I'll hit a couple of the questions and answers that were included. This is just a chart to show you both the number of total respondents, which you can see there is 239 who answered. Just so you know, in terms of how we go out and put the survey out, when we do a survey, we do it by member firm. So each year, the Association has about 950 members. So we would have sent out about 950 links to the survey. With 239 responding, that's about a 25% response rate. If you follow survey data, then you would know that they say that in order for survey results to be statistically valid, you have to have at least a 22% response rate. So take that for what it's worth. That would mean that these answers are statistically valid and could be relied upon. You can also see here the breakdown of the people who answered based on their position within the funeral home. So we asked several questions. One of them was, has your funeral home experienced a shortage of the, in terms of qualified licensed funeral directors available for hire? You can see that just under 44% said they had. Another 30-ish said no. And another quarter had said that they just really hadn't needed to hire recently. So it was really not an applicable question for them. We asked our members if they were concerned about the future workforce. You can see a very large percentage, 76% of the respondents said yes. Only about 13% said no. And then there's that, you'll see, there's a kind of a consistency theme of about 10 to 11% that are just folks who are not sure or haven't really thought about these issues at the time we asked these questions. We then asked them if they felt that we should continue to explore this topic of the licensed structure. You can see just about half said yes. Another 40-ish percent said no. And there's that 10% again that really hadn't thought about it. And then although we didn't give them the same level of detail that we just gave you in terms of those two positions, we did give them a very high-level overview of the two that were being discussed. And then we asked them, based on that, just if they felt that we should continue to explore both positions. So first, with regard to the funeral assistant position, you can see that about 52% said yes. They think we should continue to explore that possibility. Another 37-ish percent said no. And there's that 11% that we're unsure. With the arranger, it was about 35% who said we should continue to explore it. Almost 55% said no. And then that 10% not sure what we should do. So that was the additional data point for the survey. And that concludes all the information we had to share with you on the paraprofessional topic. And then just before we open it up for conversation, as it relates to alcohol in a funeral home, there has not been the same level of due diligence or research or effort put into it at this point. But because it is also something that would require a change in law, we wanted to bring this up with you and get your initial feedback again as to whether this is a topic we should continue to do some due diligence around and explore. With regard to alcohol in the funeral home, it would really be deemed an expansion of the food and beverage law. It came up last year in December during the Governmental Affairs Committee meeting in the context of whether someone could even have a champagne toast. And I think it came, it was something along the lines of, you know, we should look at allowing alcohol in the funeral home. If someone comes in and wants to do a champagne toast or a shot of Baileys or their favorite beer, we're not able to do something like that. So that was the context it was brought up in. So we haven't taken any further action, as I mentioned, or any due diligence. Hasn't, no other due diligence has been conducted at this point. But we wanted to have a conversation with our members and get feedback on alcohol in the funeral home, whether you're supportive of exploring the concept, have concerns about it, some of the questions you might have about it, whether there are any restrictions around it that you would, or a way of presenting it that you would find that we should be looking at, things of that nature. So that concludes all of the information we had to share with you. So we will use the balance of our time to just allow for feedback, questions, comments on either of these two topics. So I will now stop sharing my screen, and I will open the floor up to anyone on the Zoom meeting who would like to offer comments, questions, or any other feedback. So does anybody, especially the folks from the region who are on the line, let me ask the broad question of, that we asked in the survey in terms of exploring these issues further. Do you have a position as to whether you would like to see us explore either or both of these things more? Or would you prefer that we don't do anything further with either or both of them? Again, you can also type in your response if it's easier based on how you're logged in.
Mike, I'll share some information. Maybe it will entice some people to have a conversation. So with regards to the paraprofessional for the Certified Funeral Assistant, you know, we're thinking that a lot of us have come off of the peak of the pandemic. And many funeral homes use the executive order option to deputize an existing employee to help with transfer of remains. So that is a similarity in this discussion and what real time happened over the past seven months. With regards to alcohol in the funeral home, some important information to keep in mind. 49 out of the 50 states allow for food and basic beverage in the funeral home. 46 out of the 50 states allow for alcohol consumption. Now, that is either by specific state statute that allows the funeral home to offer consumption of alcohol, or where there is no statute in place, the funeral home would abide by the governing bodies and apply for the necessary licensing in each state. So that is, I guess, some information of both of these items, and hopefully it starts some discussion there.
Any comments from any of the folks on the call?
Michael?
Yes, David?
David Parenti. So my only comment, we have to, it's fine that 46 states allow alcohol, but I just think we have to be mindful. Alcohol is a depressant. To bring that into our environment, I think, means a lot of scrutiny. It is a depressant. So I just, that's my, that would be my comment.
Thank you. Not to put John or Bob on the hotspot, but I know you guys are both from the, you're two of the regional members on the call today. If you have any sentiment or feedback for us on either, we'd love to hear it. Again, not forcing you, but it's a pretty small group today, so I figured.
I was leaving it for the folks in the region, but I could, we'd do all for, you know, section later in here at our funeral home. And I'd just say that many times folks are asking for, you know, whether they could have some wine with their, whether it be a lunch or in between the visitation hours. We have had many instances where, not even a champagne toast, but if somebody liked a particular, whether it be scotch or something, just a toast. I think I would never advocate for a full bar to be available, especially what David's stating, or having somebody get a little bit out of hand. But, you know, we've had many instances where they just wanted to have a toast, whether it be the end of the visitation. Again, I could speak to that. And I know Bill brought up the deputizing, and we did use, you know, that, especially under the extreme conditions that we were under. Could not have worked, you know, without it. I know we don't have currently a workforce issue here in our region and our area downstate. But I know, speaking to some folks upstate, it's way upstate, seems to be in the rural areas. Could be a problem. So again, I think we were just looking for these issues and get some feedback from different regions on these topics.
Thank you. John Cannon, I see you unmuted yourself. Did you have some feedback you'd like to share?
My input is just, I clearly would have some reservations. The benefit, I think, is minimal compared to the possibility or how it could get out of hand. And I just don't want to put our staff into that type of environment or have an environment where it becomes out of control. So my reservation would be to keep things the way they are. But that's the conservative in me.
And John, can I just ask, is that with regard to both paraprofessionals and alcohol in the funeral home? Or was that just the alcohol in the funeral home?
Specific to the alcohol issue.
Okay.
Both the paraprofessionals. But I think the task force is doing the right thing and doing their homework very well. So.
Thank you.
See how that evolves.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mike, John Kelly?
Hey, John.
I'm kind of heavily in the support of the paraprofessional program, not necessarily in the designation as a paraprofessional. I prefer to see it as a funeral home assistant. But in any event, in the North Country, where we're a lot of single owners, no other staff other than part-time on-call people, this would give us a real opportunity to enhance our services to the general public. And they do it in Vermont. I've got all the paperwork on that. It's been a very successful program over there, and it certainly helped out the small funeral homes in that area. In the North Country, finding funeral directors is nearly impossible. Several of the firms that I'm familiar with have exhausted resources and trying to come up with some funeral directors to hire, and they're just not available. Schools are not producing what we would call a consistent flow of new residents that would become funeral directors. And I guess we just need to keep pursuing this, I think, effort to give some assistance to the small funeral homes. And as far as the alcohol in funeral homes is concerned, most of the places up here in the North Country, where we have small restaurants, fire departments, fishing game clubs, and others that cater to little receptions after funerals, we certainly don't want to buck that little small business income that they might get from doing, you know, a small entertainment thing for after funerals. So that's something that we didn't endorse when it originally came up. And most of the small places don't seem to want to endorse it now.
Thank you.
Just to continue that conversation that John mentioned, you know, there's no perfect position, right? And, you know, what we do realize and what we have realized is that having these discussions throughout our state, our colleagues throughout our state may benefit from a paraprofessional, but not necessarily, you know, support alcohol. And, you know, where there is an abundance of, let's just say, more, maybe it appears that there's, there could be more funeral directors available in the downstate area. more funeral directors available in the downstate area and lacking upstate. You know, let we, you know, I guess downstate wouldn't begrudge a colleague in the, in the northern portion of New York with, for that, to have a paraprofessional option. So I, I, I just, I always encourage people to be fair-minded, you know, in their approach, where something may not necessarily benefit you immediately, but if you're hearing that there's a colleague that could benefit from an initiative or an option, you know, not, you know, be, keep in mind that you may be that colleague that, you know, a year from now or ten years from now. So to keep an open mind when supporting these, these options.
Any other comments, questions, feedback on either of those two topics, or quite frankly, anything else, even COVID-related, since we have folks on the line?
So, Michael, it's David again.
Yes.
You know, I think Bill, Bill make, make, makes a good point. You, you can't paint everyone with the same brush for things that are positive or negative for their business. I just think with the alcohol issue, big, big picture, I'm just not sure it's what we should stand for. It's an, it's a substance, it's a substance that's abused. We're all trained in grief, grief psychology. I don't know how you can bring in a depressant product, a product that depresses people. It's by its very nature into this environment. I just don't know that it stands for the right thing. I, I'm not a hundred percent against it. I'm, I'm still open to the discussion. But I think, I, I just think we have to be really careful about what we stand for in this environment, trying to keep, keep people healthy, trying to grieve healthy, trying to provide services to families that, that are meaningful. And New, New York is, is the gold standard in the country, in my opinion. So I think it's incumbent on us even more to be very careful about, about the alcohol, the alcohol piece. But again, I, I do think we all, we all should keep an open mind going forward. More discussion, more research, and how, how would you justify it? You know, those are the kind of things we need to, we need to focus on. Thank you.
Thank you. And yeah, I think it's important to keep in mind, as I, I mentioned earlier, but I haven't reinforced that we're not asking members to take a, a, a vote, straw vote, or any other vote. The really, the question right now on the table is, as we move ahead and go, the board looks at this further, does the membership support or not support moving forward and further fleshing out either or both of these issues? Obviously, I think John Cannon said it, you know, you can see the work of the task force and the way they're put crafting things. Again, we may never need or never decide to, to offer the, either of those new positions. But if the time comes and we decide we want to, it's obviously much better for us to be in a position where we were proactive in looking at the issue. Same thing with alcohol in the funeral home. We're much further, it's, we're not even close to as further along in, in that one. That's really in its initial stages. So I think of your concerns, David, there were several other issues to keep in mind that other folks brought up. You know, things like, just simple things like on the business side in terms of ensuring you have the right liability protections in your funeral home. What kind of licensing would be required and regulatory oversight? How would it be, how would it be presented to the customer? Would it be part of a package deal? Would it be only offered in a very limited way? Those kind of things are all great questions that we need to answer. But we're not even anywhere near the, the point of being able to answer those at this phase of the process. So I think right now for that one, it was, and both of them, it's really, do we take, do we take further steps in exploring these and putting meat to the bone, so to speak? Or do we just say, okay, this is really not the right time or place to look at them? But, so again, I think it's very important to hear from our members about the things that are on their mind, either things they want us to make sure we're doing in terms of anything we incorporate into one of these two topics, or things that we should not make sure we don't do as we look at those two topics. So just to be clear, like that, we're at the stage now where do we, or do we, do we or do we not continue the conversation into the future on either or both of those? So again, this really helps us, and will help the board also if we're supposed to look at, if we're going to look at these further. So anything else anybody has to share? And again, anything, any other questions related to anything going on in your, in your world right now with regard to questions you might have because of COVID? Or anything else that you have a question about? Feel free to ask that now. If not, you know, again, I mentioned we have an hour designated, but we definitely have no time constraints on, on the front end or the back end. So I will not keep folks unnecessarily longer than we need to. So give one more shout out if anybody has any other final questions or comments. All right. Well, I want to thank everybody for joining us today. And before we sign off, I will just turn it back over to Bill for some final comments.
Great, Mike. Thank you. And as always, thank you, everyone who got on the call today. Thank you so very much. If there is any additional questions that you have or any concerns, please email Mike or anybody on the Executive Board. We're all accessible. We're excited to continue these regional meetings again this afternoon and then into tomorrow. And then we'll provide some, some much-needed information to our members post the regional meeting. So once again, thank you to all of our sponsors that have, that underwrite and always support the State Association. Thank you to Mike for, again, presenting. You can smile, Mike. It's okay. Don't be so, there you go. Very good. Nice smile. All right. Very good. So listen, folks, have a great day. Be safe. Keep your family safe. Keep your community safe, and we're here to help you. So thank you very much and have a great day. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Goodbye, everybody.